We'll go ahead and call to order the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Work Session of Thursday, March 30th, 2023 at 6:30 PM in the Assembly Chambers. For everyone's information, work sessions are informal meetings of the Assembly where Assembly members review the upcoming regular meeting agenda packet and seek or receive information from staff. Although additional items not listed on the work session agenda are discussed when introduced by the mayor, Assembly, or staff, no formal action is taken at work sessions, and items that require formal Assembly action are placed on regular Assembly agendas. So at this time, we'll open citizens' comments, and the local number is 907-486-3231, and the toll-free number is 855-492-9202. And limited to three minutes per speaker. We'll wait just a bit and see if anybody calls in here at this time. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to agenda items, which is A, discuss the process/overview for filling the mayoral seat. And at this time, I think I will turn that over to Nova.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Assembly. The current mayor, current Mayor Amy Williams has tendered her resignation as mayor effective at the end of April, and she will assume her position as the new manager on May 1, 2023. The resignation has created a vacancy in the office of the mayor, and since the vacancy is occurring within six months of a regular election, the vacant seat will be filled by the Assembly instead of holding a special election. The person selected shall serve until October 2023, and a two-year mayoral term will be placed on the October 3 ballot. So the Borough Code is a lot more detailed when it comes to filling the vacancy, an Assembly seat. However, for filling the mayoral seat, it only contemplates a majority vote of the Assembly, so it requires four votes of the Assembly to fill the mayor's seat. The fact that the Kodiak Island Borough Code talks about from among its members could be used to argue that it must be an Assembly member, but the reference to applicants in KIBC 2.2100 makes it sound more open. If the Assembly wants to simply vote to choose among its members, then the Assembly can do so by majority vote. If the Assembly appoints one of its members, then no process is required beyond a motion and a vote. Majority vote is required. So it has been discussed during agenda setting that if someone is interested from the Assembly to fill the mayoral seat, it is requested that you express your interest by Thursday, April 13, and the Assembly could then make the appointment on Thursday, April 20. So if you decide to, or if an Assembly member, if there's no interest from the Assembly, then the attorney suggested that you may want to hold an open call for applicants rather than simply appointing someone by motion without soliciting expressions of interest by an application process. So if you decide that you're, that that's the direction that you're going to take, since the code is very silent on the process, there's no process for an open call and for like a timeline for filling the seat, I put together an example of maybe a timeline that you may want to consider, and I use the timeline that we use for filling an Assembly member's seat. So I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Joe.
Thank you. Nova, one question. If, if an Assembly member expresses interest in, in a majority, then confirms that, does that create a vacant Assembly seat, or would that person be able to revert back to their Assembly seat?
No, it will create a vacant, a vacancy on the Assembly, and I would need to follow the-
For that process, for that?
-code section to fill that-
Okay. So it's not a, it couldn't be a temporary move?
No.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Kind of a domino effect.
Yeah.
So, any further questions? Chair.
Nova, thank you so much for putting this calendar together, or this potential timeline. The, since the, the code is perhaps unclear about the, making the appointment from among members or from applicants, do you feel that there is a priority in the code that we look to the Assembly membership first and then? Because I didn't, I didn't see anything like that, you know, explicitly laid out. I guess my question is, could we do both at the same time? Open up interest on April 13th to both the public and the Assembly?
I think that's a call, I think that's a call of the Assembly if you wish to do it that way. I think the attorney was not, when I asked for, when I asked a few questions from the attorney, he didn't really give a priority or ranking that it should be opened up to the-
To everyone.
-Assembly first. Well, the way that he, he mentioned it is that, or he responded to my question is that maybe ask the Assembly if there's no one, then if you can decide to do an open call. That's how the response to me was. But if you want to do it openly to the Assembly and also at the same time to the public, you know, that's maybe a call that you can make.
Thank you.
Joe.
My thoughts right now is that if we have until the 13th for one of us to apply for a seat, and then if nobody does by the 13th, then we open it up to the public, and I think that would be the way I would like to go.
Larry.
I'm sort of interested in doing both. It's an unelected position. Could be. It'd be nice to see who in the public is interested and has the time to do that, and I think it doesn't negate somebody from the Assembly, but I think, you know, the mayor's pretty important role, and, you know, a mayor can, through veto power, can shut down a majority, and I'd like to see it in an open process. I don't see any reason to limit it to just Assembly and wait.
Anyone else? With that, I'll go ahead and chime in. I'm in favor of, like Joe said, going and seeing if from within the Assembly. One of the, one of the reasons for doing that is there's only four and a half months or so left on the term, and what it amounts to is if it's somebody within, we've worked together, and it's easier to continue working rather than bringing somebody in from the outside that hasn't done it and trying to train them. That would be my problem. So I'm, I'm going to go with we ask from the Assembly first, and then if no one from the Assembly is interested, then we go out there to the public. So, thank you.
Jeff.
Is there anything that would prevent us from moving the April 13th date up to April 6th, and say, somebody from the Assembly, if they have an interest, they've got a week? And then start an open process rather than delaying for two weeks before we go?
Okay, so are you, are you thinking that you want to appoint on the 6th of April?
I think on the 6th of April-
That's a regular meeting.
Right. All I'm looking for is the expressing interest by the 6th. If somebody from the Assembly has interest, then why wait two more weeks when they could express their interest by the 6th? And if nobody does, then we can start the process from trying to go from outside.
Well, what, what this does is, and that's, that's definitely an option, but the 6th is a regular meeting.
Right.
So it puts it to a work session on the 13th for the regular meeting on the 20th is where we would then appoint.
Okay.
The mayor's seat is still filled until the 30th. It isn't-
Okay. No, okay. That's correct. Thank you. That clarified for me. I had forgotten that, that the resignation wasn't effective-
So, the resignation is effective-
Yep. The 30th, so we're fine on that regard.
30th of April, and then the, she takes the manager's job on May 1st.
Yep. Yep, yep, yep. I had forgotten that part. Thank you.
Any, any further discussion? Yes, Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I'm, I'm with Larry also. I, I understand, I think there is value in looking to the Assembly first because we were elected in or brought in through, you know, brought in through an elected process, and so I think there's credibility behind, behind appointing an Assembly member. But also at the same time, I think, you know, if, I think we owe it to the public to open it up at the, at the same time, there might be somebody with mayoral experience who just wants to step in and help for a few months, and then that saves going through the process of, of appointing, you know, a new, a new Assembly member. I also think that, you know, whether, whether justified or not, you know, there are, there are concerns about the, the transparency behind the manager hire process, and I think if we, if we can keep this process open to the public, as open as it is with, with us here on the Assembly, I think that goes towards validating that trust with the public. So, so I, I think I would still, I don't think we have anything to lose by opening it up to Assembly members and the public at the same time, because it could be that the Assembly member is still the most qualified or interested applicant on there, but, and you know, part of me still thinks that it's, we've got to, we've got to have the public have a say in this also. It's a big, it's a big deal. So I'm going to hitch with Larry on this one, I think.
Okay. Jeff, you look like you want to raise your-
Well, I'm, I'm going to raise my hand because that's got two people saying one thing and two people saying something different, which means we're going to have to keep talking about this some more. So, so I'll throw my last two cents into this and say I would agree with the comments from Assembly Member Ladue and Griffin, and I would say let's open the process up to everybody right now and not just keep it to the Assembly first and then the public second, so.
Okay. Further discussion? Joe?
I guess I would say that it almost seems like we would know by the end of, we would know right away whether, somebody should know right away whether or not they want to be the mayor, I mean, an Assembly member. And so maybe it doesn't take that long to, to do this, and maybe we can open it up sooner. I would think that, except for the one Assembly member who isn't here tonight, all of us would have an idea of whether or not we want to be the mayor or not, and so even by the end of tonight, we should know. And if, if nobody has an interest right now, perhaps it is a good idea to open it up to us all or to the, the community.
Okay, so you've got some conditions on it. James, you haven't said anything.
No comment.
So, so yeah. Okay. Yeah, I kind of wish Scott was here, Scott Smiley, because I haven't, I would like to know as deputy presiding what his thoughts are. The, that's, that's part of the problem with trying to do something tonight. So Joe, you're thinking, wait till the 6th because we may have everybody here? Okay, James?
Well, we're not going to do anything tonight.
No.
It's a work session, so this is just a discussion for next week as to-
Which way to go.
-how we proceed. But I would think that somebody that is done with their Assembly seat at the end of this, well, in October, November, after, for the election, whoever's up for election, I should say, would probably want to sit in that seat to get some experience for next election when we've got a, when the community has to vote for a mayor at that point, but.
Well, we have three seats up this coming October. Three of us are here tonight.
I also have an idea, but it would be a executive session idea, and I can't say it out loud, so.
So, okay. So I think we've, we've talked this one through. Would you, I'm trying to think of how we would put this on the agenda if you're, if you're wanting- Nova, I'd be looking to, do we put something, or do we just say that somebody needs to declare from the Assembly by next Thursday? Yes. Larry?
If somebody declares, it doesn't mean that the Assembly's going to support them.
Correct.
So I think we got to, so that would be a vote, and if somebody in the public was a good candidate, that would be a vote. So whether somebody decides from the Assembly to run tonight, tomorrow, or two weeks from now, it still would be as other than the Assembly because it's a-
Correct.
-position, so.
Technically, like the clerk said, it takes four.
Right.
Okay.
So, what would you like to do? Would you like to open it up to the public now? Start advertising with the deadline to express interest? Or are you going to do a different-
I think we're going to wait till next Thursday and decide on there is what I, what I'm seeing.
Are you expecting, like, are you, are you going to, is the expectation someone from the Assembly to express an interest by next Thursday?
Right.
If there's no-
That's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing tonight.
Interest, then we'll open it up to the public? Is that the direction you're taking?
What I heard is that three of us want to advertise both.
And three, two, at least two, two of us have spoke and said, but we don't have four.
No.
So.
But we don't have the others either.
Right. So right now, it'll move forward without a decision on where we go. So.
Yes, Chair.
Thank you, Scott. Is it possible then for next week's meeting, Nova, I hate to ask you to do more work, but to create a timeline calendar, have this one, and then also have a calendar that has a timeline for when we open them both at the same time, both the Assembly interest and the public interest, and what that calendar would look like? Or would it really not look too much different than this?
So what you're, so what's the target deadline to submit interest if, because I can create that timeline?
I mean, whatever is in our code requirements, like, I, if we decide next Thursday to open it up for Assembly members, then that, then that should also be the date that we open it up to the public, too. So whatever that looks like in a, in a timeline-
As a timeline.
As a timeline for the public. So, so if we declared next week, here's a hypothetical, if we declared next week, all right, we're going to open this up to see if there are any Assembly members interested and also the public. So as starting tomorrow, we're going to advertise it, and then 14 days from there?
Okay.
Is that how it would work? No, it doesn't have to be the 6th, but.
She'll figure it out, because it's kind of hard to advertise the next day.
Right. Exactly. But, but as soon as-
Monday.
Maybe Monday, yeah.
So are you, also for clarification, are you expecting to discuss this again on Thursday? Because it's not on the agenda for next Thursday.
Expecting to discuss it Thursday.
I think so.
Next Thursday.
So I guess that highlighted part there on the April 13th, it says, Assembly member's deadline to express interest in filling the mayor's seat. Well, yeah.
Are we adjusting that to the 6th?
We're going to adjust that to the 6th.
Okay. So I'm going to adjust the timeline then by week.
All righty. We got that. So next item we have is clerk's comments.
The Board of Equalization Appeal ends today, so anyone can still file an appeal, although the office is closed. It will be open until 11:59 PM. Correct, Seema? I received five more appeals at 5:25 today. So, so far, we have eight applications so far, or appeals so far that we have received. So the Board of Equalization will meet on Monday, May 1st for their hearing. In preparation for that hearing, we're providing a training to the BOE members on April 17. It's a yearly, annually, we train our BOE members, and the person who does the training is the state assessor. I would like to thank my staff, Irene and Lena. They've been working really hard the past few weeks dealing with records. They have conducted an inventory of all the records that we have in the records room, and they have compiled and submitted the annual records destruction to the, to the departments and also to our attorney. So you will be seeing a shorter list of our annual destruction this time around, and it is because of your approval of the Code Amendment last year when we changed the process of eliminating the resolution process, because that was cumbersome. Now it's a lot, we were able to catch up with our records destruction. It's a lot faster now to destroy records, and we are, I'm happy to say that we are on target with our records, and we are caught up with the records destruction. So in, in addition to that, I would like to let you know also that my staff and I will be attending Laserfish, Laserfish conferences. I will be attending in April, and then my staff, both Lena and Irene, will be attending the Laserfish conference in May, and we will be using what we learned from these conferences in mending our broken electronic records as of the moment, and we hope to improve customer experience on the public side, and we're searching for records online. We hope to accomplish that in the next few months. Thank you for the opportunity.
And thank you for scheduling the time to keep the office open to all the trainings going on. So, thank you.
Any questions of the court?
Okay. Next time's the manager's report. Dave?
Yes, good evening, and thank you. I can't take too many more short weeks. This was the busiest short week I think I've ever had. We, I met with some folks, took an opportunity, the Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management with the state had the tsunami workshop this week here. It was held at the KI, and I met independently with a couple of meteorologists and a flood plane specialist from NOAA that came down, and this could be very interesting and beneficial to the community. NOAA, on the weather side, is trying to figure out how to serve their customers better. And they even, I, I had no idea that you can actually get on a hotline, that you get your name on a list, that if they have an interesting weather event that could be significant to the local area. For instance, if they saw something coming to the island that wasn't, wouldn't normally be forecast on a general wide basis, they can make specific phone calls to notify emergency management and things of that nature. So they're, they're trying to become a better resource for the public, and I think that because of our climates and microclimates here, that that could be a huge advantage, especially, you know, the, what, I don't know that we get what they call fall sea storms, but we get big old honk and blows, and it'd be sure nice to have those notifications to our emergency managers, all the way to even notifying the hospital that, hey, there could be a flooding event, there could be this, there could be that, you know, the, the emergency services here in town. So, so I think that was quite, quite good. I also think we're going to see some interest in NOAA coming down here to look at our flashy river systems and threat areas for flash flooding as well as landslides. The, the flood plane specialist, the hydrologist that I toured with on Tuesday, excuse me, was quite interested in some of the, what I'm going to call individual oddly located landslides that start, you know, at the top of the mountain and only go so far. And she was extremely interested in the cut down here by the, by the crane, by the freight crane and whatnot, and informed her that if she gets with the state, that this is on a list of high priorities for landslide areas. So, so it'll be interesting to see where that goes. One of the meteorologist's husband was actually, works for the USDA, he's a forester for the feds, and Chief Vinlessen and I met with him this morning for quite some time, and he was there to graciously gave us his time to discuss potential grants and how we can interact with the NRCS and how we could potentially look at supporting some of the projects in the villages regarding wildland firefighting and maybe upping their capabilities. So I thought that was some pretty good times spent over the last week. We are having a, I've requested a special session tonight to have some discussions regarding union contract negotiations. We canceled those today and tomorrow to make sure that we can have the manager's budget completed and submitted in a timely manner, and that is going well, and we can discuss specifics in, in the meeting after this meeting. Compensation study is continuing. There was a second round of requests sent out to Alaska Municipalities to please participate so we can gather some more data for that study. My report is wrong about the number of BOE. I was not aware, I wrote it, that we were going to have those last minute applicants. There's been some, we're going to talk a little bit tonight about the PKIMC. I'm happy to answer that. That item has been referred and has been ordered by Providence, so we've got that moving. We met with Providence here this week, Tuesday, I believe it was, and the- We met with Providence here this week, Tuesday, I believe it was, and the, for the Health Facilities Advisory Board, I'm going to populate, start populating that particular agenda, and maybe, since I'll be leaving all the clerk's offices, if they can't print that period out for those committee members, there's some very important items on there that are moving forward, as well as having the proposal for the study for the healthcare, overall healthcare situation, both facilities, acting with the public, all that has been cooled and has been redesigned, reflect a new process, as well as dealing with some of the comments that were issued by the Assembly. Seem to be a big deal at both Providence and also the middle school, which I think the other day, the elevator at the middle school is breaking down, so we're going to need to look at some repairs, and we're hoping to be able to get some kind of volume discount here. Also, had a meeting today with the school district to continue our conversations from last week's joint work session. I think these are quite fruitful. I am concerned about some of the requests regarding electrical in the F Wing, so I'll talk to the electrician tomorrow about giving me an estimate to do an overall examination. Apparently, they are continually popping breakers in certain areas over there, and that is not good. I think they, modern equipment may be overwhelming ancient circuits. That's the best way to appraise that. So, there's a whole lot of other, other, and is looked at and maintained on a regular basis. Think about how many times the hospital elevators cycle, and the fact that they're 20 years old. That puts the, although the elevator at the middle school is older, I doubt that the frequency is there that the elevators are utilized at the hospital. Those hospital, if you've got to get my rear end from the third floor to the second floor to surgery, I want that elevator working. So, I think there's a prioritization, but I think that if you, if you put out a proposal to repair or upgrade three elevators, that's better than one.
Yeah. I was just thinking, the State Department of Public Buildings and that here had DOT, and that has elevators in their buildings here, too, and I was just curious.
I don't know who their vendor is.
Yeah.
So, we have, we have an agreement with them. Just so happens that Providence and the Borough has the same vendor. However, I'll point out to you that the hospital is the Borough's responsibility, and it is over $25,000, the retrofit.
Yeah, and they're over 25,000. So, anyone else have any question?
Just on the top of elevators, I thought at one time we were having to, the high school, I heard that at one of the meetings, we had brought the high school up. I was just curious if that's the case, or Maine Elementary for that matter?
I haven't heard anything specific. I think when we had our, when we had our elevator consultant come down, he had discussed it, there are some adjustment issues with almost every elevator, I learned out of that. So, I think perhaps we need to, perhaps enhance our internal knowledge of what to expect for maintenance and go down that path.
Thank you. Larry?
And this is sort of connected to the discussion we had with the school board, we met with them. You know, you look at the number of elevators in town at the Coast Guard Base, I don't know how many they have in the high school auditorium, middle school complex, Maine Elementary, but it would seem like at some point in time to get all those folk who are responsible for buildings, both at the Coast Guard Base, Kana, anybody that, you know, has a building that they're responsible for, to get together and see if they can save money by scale and scope. Be interesting to know how many elevators are Otis or, you know, and to look at everything from lighting controls, fire controls, HVAC systems, heating, fuel, to look at all of those areas that we can save money if we work together. And I know facilities committees talk about, you know, new construction and maintenance of buildings and that kind of thing, but it would be really interesting if there was a committee that actually looked at ways that we could save money as an island for things that we have to pay specialists for to come into town. And it seems like island-wide, that would save a heck of a lot of money, and I think the city was right, you know, when they approached us at one time saying, hey, let's work together on certain things. And, you know, nobody's set up to do that, but when times are tough, maybe we need to sit down and, instead of seeing what we could do to save money as a borough or a school district, or hospital, or the Coast Guard, or Kana, that those responsible people would get together and say, we can save a lot of money if we work together. And I know that takes time and effort, but if you, if the public knew how much it costs to fix an elevator, or to fix an alarm system, you know, in a school, and all those settings that have to be done, it may be that different organizations would contribute to support such an activity and still, excuse me, still save a lot of money. Because, you know, in the years to come, it's not going to be business as usual, the money just won't be there, and these things cost a lot of money. I know Maine Elementary one time was a couple hundred thousand to replace it. I don't know if you were here then, but it's pretty nasty when they go out. So, just a thought.
Dave?
Well, I think this is the start of what you're suggesting, and you need to start somewhere, and these are in front of us right now. I think this goes back to an earlier conversation we had, is I think we need to look at the term of our contracts. In order to maximize our ability to potentially reduce costs and coordinate, we need to get rid of these two- and three-year contracts, because if a contract isn't for a longer, more lucrative period of time, where a vendor would may possibly consider buying an apartment or buying a home where they can reduce their costs, then I think you have a better potential for a long-term relationship, and you would end up probably getting better service.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the packet review. First thing is, on the agenda is awards and presentation, presentation of the Certified Municipal Clerk designation to Borough Deputy Clerk Lena Cruz. Nova, I'll turn that over to you, what your plans are.
Thank you. I am really proud of Lena for receiving or attaining her CMC designation. I remember in 2019, I was a part of the hiring team. As I was exiting the Borough and transitioning to the city, I had the opportunity to interview her, and I was a part of that, the hiring team. And now she has her CMC designation. I am really proud of her. She worked really hard. She has attended institutes. So far, she has attended three. She has been attending the AEMC conferences. She volunteered on a few committees that enabled her to earn some of her points. It's a very rigorous program, and she worked really aggressively and hard, because she really wanted it. And I am so excited for her, and I am really, really proud of her for attaining this certification and also getting her pin as a CMC. So, we'll be presenting that to her next Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is public hearings. First one is ordinance number FY 2023-13, Amending Kodiak Island Borough Title 17 Zoning, Chapter 180 Signs, Section 17.180.010 Signs, Description and Intent to Require Zoning Compliance Permits for Certain Signs. Seema, I will ask you for the staff report there.
Good evening. So, this is, I don't know, the sixth time that you guys have seen this. We, we keep bringing it back to you. So, this is just for some signs, not all signs to be regulated by a zoning compliance. It's just part of that code cleanup that I like to do so much.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, move on to the next ordinance for public hearing. That's ordinance number FY 2023-15, Amending Title VII Elections, Chapter 7.40, Canvassing and Certification of the Election Returns, Section 7.40.010 Canvas and Returns. Nova, I'll ask you for...
Thank you. It's one of those code cleanup, and I am glad that I ran into it, and I checked with our attorney. We checked the statutes. It's not required by the statutes for return ballots to be placed inside a gray envelope in order to be counted. I also checked with other municipalities. When I started working for the Borough 20 years ago, that's the, how the code was written, and I never questioned it until the last election, when the race was tight, and I wanted to make sure that I crossed my Ts and dotted my Is, and then I really felt regretful about rejecting ballots, you know, even two or three rejecting those ballots. It meant so much to me that I had to check the code, and so, that's what I found, and I thought I'd give you a show and tell today. So, this is how it looks like when they returned the ballot. They use this envelope, and they fill out the information that's on the back, and this is what we use to verify the qualifications of the voter. And then they are also requested to use this gray envelope. It's actually labeled gray secrecy sleeve. So, there, we've all, for 20 years, these are the envelopes that we've used. They're gray, and this is the size that they've used. You can't get this from Walmart, or, you know, these are from the state. So, what we require the voters to do is that they need to put their ballot inside this gray envelope, and they have to return it inside this envelope. So, when we're canvassing and we see that a ballot is not in the gray envelope, we automatically put this envelope in the rejected box. But I think we, or the canvas board, should be able to find a way to protect the privacy of that ballot. We can pull it out and then cover it, and stick it in another envelope, and then put it in the valid votes and still count it. That's what I'm asking you to do, is for us to be allowed to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nova. Any questions on there? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to, next is ordinances for introduction, and this is ordinance number FY 2023-16. At ordinance of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Borough, Amending Title IV Service Areas, Chapter 4.130, Mission Lake Tide Gate Service Area, Section 4.130.020, Board to Increase the Membership of the Board. Nova, I'm assuming that goes to you.
Yes, it was requested by Mr. Craig Johnson, who is the Chair of the Mission Lake Tide Gate Service Area. They wanted to expand their membership from three members to five members, and I asked our Borough Attorney to draft the ordinance, and that is what is before you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I don't see a problem at introduction, but when it comes to the public hearing, I expect the board to show up supporting this. That's going to have an effect on, on, you know, my consideration on there. So, I just, we've seen boards that we have five members, and then we still have a problem with getting a quorum, and, and we're continuing to go through the process of appointing on those boards. So, that's, that's my concern, but, Dave?
So, I'd like to point out that this request was originally made to me, through me, two managers ago, and this has been considered for a long time, and the reason they're asking for five is specifically the reason you just stated, is because of the current makeup of the board, it is at times difficult to get a majority to these meetings. They're wanting to fill the vacancies with what was stated, quote, "a younger crowd." So, I think that's exactly what they're trying to obtain. I will attempt to contact the current board members for their support, but they have been asking for this for quite some time, so I would hope that you would consider that as well.
Okay. Thank you. And Joe?
I think that I would be in favor of that, even knowing how hard it is sometimes to get a quorum, but when you have people that are willing to do this and are asking to be put on these boards and commissions, I think that we should listen to them. So, I'm, I'm happy to see that there are people that want to do this, and they want to take part in this, so I think that I would be in favor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item is an ordinance for introduction, and this is ordinance number FY 2023-17, Amending the Kodiak Island Borough Personal Rules and Regulations 2022 Edition to Reflect Changes in the Moving Expenses for New Employee Section. Staff report. Dave?
I think Dora will handle this, and I will chime in after she's done.
Okay, thank you. Dora?
Evening. We have had a number of vacant positions at the Borough for a while, and hiring local hasn't been as effective as we would desire. We've had to go outside the Borough to recruit for positions. In the past, moving expenses hasn't been as big an issue as it is now when we're recruiting outside the Borough. Moving expenses are a standard of one-month salary allowance. There's a transportation agreement they sign for a payback if they stay less than two years. This is a benefit, just like health insurance or any other benefits that, that we provide our employees, except this one has a payback if they don't stay. And we're asking two changes in the personnel manual. One is to make it so we don't have to come to you every time we want to offer the standard benefit to a prospective candidate. The timing makes it difficult. The last one, we would have had to wait three weeks, and candidates are not going to wait three weeks for a job offer or a response to a request for moving, help with moving expenses. The other change we thought was more appropriate was that we remove the advance for moving expenses from the manager and make that an assembly decision. Anything over the standard one-month allowance for moving expenses would come to the Assembly, just like it has in the past.
Thank you. Dave, any further comments?
The only comment would be is, the other reason we did this, and I stated this when we first looked at it, is this is all within the manager's signature authority as it stands now, so it's not like we're supplanting anything.
Any further questions by the Assembly? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the, the next items, other items on the agenda, and the first thing there is acceptance of Ms. Amy Williams' resignation as Mayor of the Kodiak Island Borough. Nova?
Thank you. So, this is effective at the end of April, and Ms. Williams will be assuming the position of the manager on May 1st.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, move on. Next is approval of a letter of support to the Native Village of Port Lyons, Denali Commission Grand Application to Implement a Design for Resurfacing of the Roads in Port Lyons. Dave, assuming I'll ask you for a report.
Did you skip one here? Did you skip one here?
Not on my list.
Oh, okay.
It's not on mine.
I apologize for that. I think when we, I had to republish the packet, and things moved. And I can do the report on that one, if you'd like. Are you ready?
Oh. No, it's not on here. Yeah, so Larry didn't have it either. Okay, what it is, is a confirmation of the mayororal appointment to the Cook Inlet Regional Citizens Advisory Council Board of Directors seat, and that is myself, Scott Arndt, currently a member. It's a three-year term, and asking to continue on that board. So that'll be before you, uh, next Thursday. Any questions? Jeff?
I think I've asked this before, but I'll ask it again. I believe your seat is, is up for election in the fall as well, correct?
Yes, yes. Yours, mine, and Joe's.
Right. And so this identifies this as a borough seat. And so if, if we appoint a member of the Assembly and they are not reelected, or choose not to run again for election, do they vacate that seat?
Correct. And then the Assembly will have to appoint a new one.
That's not, that's not what's happening anywhere else on the, on the board. Kodiak is the only, the only seats, Kodiak Island Boroughs are the only elected seats on the board anymore. Originally from all, from Keen eye, you know, and, and Homer, and Zaldivia, Seward, that there were, those were, they started out as elected positions, and then people got on them, and they got reappointed by the board, or by their community. So what Kodiak has done is you don't step down, you fill the seat out. I took when Kyle Crowes expired, after he had gotten off the Assembly, then I applied for that seat, but not until his term expired. It was not vacated right away.
There's historical information, if you look under Other Information in, on the Agenda summary, you will see that we started with Scott Smiley in June 2012. And then for any vacated seat by an Assembly member, then we filled it. Like for, I would say, Scott Smiley, when he didn't run for office in 2017, the vacate, or when his term ex, no, not the term expired, what happened is that we appointed Kyle Crowe to Mr. Scott Smiley's seat.
Right. And then Kyle Crowe was off of the Assembly for over a year, and still remained on the board. He did not vacate that seat. That's the only reason I bring it up.
Yeah, I only asked the question because I wanted clarity on, on what happens with the seat, whether or not that if, if we support Mr. Arndt in, in appoint him, does he fulfill that three-year commitment? Or is that dependent upon his status as a Assembly member?
I believe based on what I see here is that it's dependent on his, on his seat, if he, as an Assembly member.
Nova wasn't a clerk when Kyle was.
Okay. I just needed, I just wanted the clarity on it to make sure I was understanding that part of it.
Yeah, she would have kept it clean.
Thank you.
Thank you. James?
So we had this discussion on the Swampy seat. We had it on this one. At the time, it was a different Assembly, and that Assembly said that they wanted to have an Assembly person on both of those boards. But at, when, when, when Scott was first appointed, Kyle was not an Assembly member at the end of his term. So for 19 and 20, he was not an Assembly member. I believe it was the part of 19. So it's both ways. It just depends on the Assembly. So we've, we've had it both ways on both of those boards.
And if you'll remember, on the Prince William Sound, the, the sitting mayor tried to appoint the current member that was on the Prince William Sound Citizens Advisory Council, and we rejected that, and we appointed Amy Williams.
I think you may be right. I think there were a few seats that were allowed to extend until the expiration of the seat, especially if the person who was appointed served as the Chair for, for that. I remember Swampy. There was an Assembly member who was, whose term expired in October, but that person, that Assembly member, was also the Chair for that organization, and the Assembly felt it wasn't fair to replace an Assembly member who chaired for so many years on that organization, and, and pulled them in the, you know, right when they're about to expire on their seat.
Larry?
I really don't care which way it is, to tell you the truth, I think on both of these. But I think we need to be consistent, and I think we need to have a policy. If we don't, it's going to lead to this kind of discussion, and hard feelings, and things that we don't need. And I just think we need a proposal, one way or the other, and I can support that. I don't believe that we should make decisions on necessarily past practice, or what, whether we had Nova as a clerk, or whether we didn't. It's not good decision-making. And before we make a decision, we need to have a, I guess we're talking about a policy or a resolution to, that we'd have to put forward first. I don't have a problem with Scott serving if he wasn't on the Assembly. I think we're lucky to have him there. So it has nothing to do with that. It just has to do with good management.
It, it may be something that we could place as a work session item in the near future.
In the future, yeah.
We have a year.
What's that?
We have a year, or months.
Yeah. Dave?
Perhaps this is something that you would want an opinion from the attorney?
I don't know. What's the Assembly's thoughts? Looking for direction. Jeff?
I, I don't, I don't know. I don't have an answer to that. I, I like what Dr. Ladue said, and that's, I guess, my point. Like, I'm grateful for your willingness to serve on it, and it's not about you.
Right.
But I think it is about the consistency of how we fill those vacant seats, and what the expectation is, so that that's clear to everybody. So I, I certainly support Dr. Ladue's comments.
Jared?
Thank you, Scott. I, you know, I think maybe getting the lawyer to look at it may not be a bad idea, because these organizations have their own bylaws and definitions of membership. And I don't think we want our definitions of membership to contradict theirs. So that might be worthwhile.
Nova?
I think there's a little bit of work that needs to be done. I think what I need to do is actually reach out to the different organizations and ask for bylaws, and the intent, and what the desire of the organization is. Do they want an actual Assembly member voted, or someone that's seated on the Assembly, or on the governing body, or is it a seat that should be open to the public as well?
James?
So, how do I say this without offending? Well, I guess I don't really care. I noticed that when, they both say Citizens Advisory. Okay, so to me, that means a, a non-Assembly member could sit on that board. But the issue that I have with it, and I had in the past with it, was that when somebody that was not on the Assembly was on that board, we did not get a lot of information out of that person, whether it be Prince William Sound, or, or Swampy, or any of those. We, we got periodic updates, quarterly updates, maybe, or none at all. And so that's, that's the issue that I have with it. But then again, we don't have a lot of information coming from the boards that we have now. So there is that.
So, okay. As Nova said, there is one, one board that I do sit on, which is the Alaska Municipal League Board of Directors, that it is stated in their bylaws that you have to be a sitting member of the Assembly or mayor. And so if you are, if you're not in elected position, then you are removed. You vacate it. So that's, I'm just saying the, it's different on the different boards, as Nova said. It just, but that's, I just throw that out there for discussion. Larry, you have a comment?
I like what Assembly Member Turner said. You know, if we come up with the conclusion that you don't have to be on the Assembly, or if you fulfill your term, then you're a citizen. So we're de facto saying that you can be a citizen and serve. So if that's the case, and Swampy is different than, you know, they're different organizations, and one is more formally tied to Assembly members. But, you know, I'd be open to, opening to the public. It's more process. It's a Citizen Advisory. And, you know, if they don't give us the information we need, then we do what we do with anyone that doesn't do that. But it may be, you know, we assume that the Assembly has the expertise to sit on some of these. And, you know, that's not always the case. Because you're elected doesn't mean you're right, or you're an expert. And that may surprise some people. But the reality is, let's, let's make it what it says it is on, on that particular one. And then it's a mood issue, whether you're an Assembly member or a citizen. You can go fulfill your term as long as you were doing your job, and you wanted to continue doing it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Joe?
I would just say that an Assembly member is a citizen.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item under Other Business is approval of a letter of support to the Native Village of Port Lyons Denali Commission grant application to implement a design for resurfacing of the roads in Port Lyons. Dave, staff report on that?
Well, although Nova is the person that originated this, I can speak to this. I can tell you, as long as I've been going to Port Lyons, they've been discussing the fact that they're looking to have their road resurfaced from the airport into town. It's quite a long road. It's quite a bumpy road. And what they're requesting is a letter of support signed by the mayor. I believe they're applying to the Denali Commission for some funding to do this 4.5-mile resurface of gravel to the main road in Port Lyons.
It says design. Is it the actual construction too, or, or just the design?
I believe what they're pursuing is that the design and construction. I don't know if that is going to be totally funded, or if this is just the first part of multiple phases. But this is the first time they formally come to this body and ask for a letter of support.
Thank you. Any comments by the Assembly? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is confirmation. Oh, that's the one we already did. It's a different order on mine. Next is approval of and authorization of an emergency expense related to the replacement chiller compressor B at the Providence Kodiak Island Medical Center facilities. Dave?
Per the, the last time we discussed this, I believe I informed you folks that as an emergency purchase, I went ahead and authorized this. This compressor motor for the chiller is a key component. It is listed at $47,402.40. That is an installed price. This is coming through a vendor that Providence has a relationship with. It has been ordered. And per discussion with you guys, when I announced that, you had asked that. I bring this before, we bring this before for a formal approval. Please do not not vote for this, because it's on its way.
Thank you. Any comments? Seeing none. So yeah, next item is Assembly Member Comments. James?
Mr. Chair, I would like to note also that I am adding as a discussion item that seat, the mayor filling the mayor's seat.
Yes, and that'll be under Other Items. Thank you. Assembly Member Comments? James?
So I would hope that one of the three that are coming up for election are going to put their name into the hat, or if not, all three. That will, that will give you some new experience on this, on this Assembly. And maybe it'll move you to put your name in the ring for mayororal.
Or not.
Otherwise, I do believe that there is somebody out there that would like to have that seat, and please apply.
Thank you. Joe?
A couple of things. It's good to see Lena, her accomplishments. It's nice to have, know that there's some succession. We sometimes struggle with that. So that's good to see her progressing. And Mr. Conrad, it's, it is, I'm happy for all of the things that you've done for us. You've taken on a lot, and sometimes not willingly, I would think. But you've done a great job, and, and I'm glad to have worked with you. It was good learning from you. And it's good to see Dora back again. So there's that as well. Thank you. That's it for tonight.
Thank you, Joe. Chair?
In addition to what Joe said, I, I just also want to, just a special gratitude for Nova, and Dora, and Seema, and your teams for all, all the code cleanup that, that you're doing. We need to, good policy has to adapt. And, and I think, and so I like, I like the, I like that direction. So thank you for that hard work, looking at letters and numbers and punctuation and things like that. Thank you.
Jeff?
Just a couple of comments. One would be congratulations to Lena, which I'll say again next week, but certainly want to recognize that, and, and commend her for the efforts. And then also to, to Dave, thank you again, and again, because you've stepped up multiple times when you've been asked, and I appreciate that. And I'm grateful that you were willing, if that's the right word, to, to kind of fill in in that. But I'm also grateful to the, the borough staff as a whole for navigating this transition period. And, and so I appreciate the efforts of all staff that, that have been made to see the borough through this, this time. But I'm grateful to you, and always will be. So thank you again.
Larry?
Well, Joe said everything I was going to say, so I won't say it all. And thank you to those folk. But I did want to extend a thank you to Nova. You may be an Assembly member very easy with your knowledge and your willingness to solve problems before they exist. And you really are a professional at what you do. And I know that you're a former president of the statewide clerks, or whatever the name is. And you have a statewide reputation, and you certainly demonstrate that expertise every time we meet. And you speak with confidence, and I have confidence in what you say and do. So I want you to know that. And I think one of the reasons that your staff is doing so well, including your assistant, who's been very, very helpful, is because they have good leader who develops them. And I think Lena would agree with that, and has shared that with me also. Also, I want to thank Dave for his knowledge and work, and his willing to step in and take on a job that many times is, I suppose, bankless to a certain extent. But I want to thank you for what you do and how you take care of our buildings. And lastly, I would just say, I want to thank the Superintendent for coming to Borough Assembly meetings. You're not paid to do that, but here you are, keeping track of what's going on with the schools. And I want you to know that I believe the Assembly notes your presence and appreciates it. And I would say that one of the things I was always concerned about is if you ever have comments, I'm hoping the Assembly will not hold you to three minutes. I'm hoping the Assembly will not hold you to three minutes and that you're always welcome to share your thoughts and concerns with the Assembly.
I agree with what everyone said, and I'm not going to repeat it. So no further comments. So at this time, we'll adjourn the work session and take a